Good afternoon, everybody. I had to call the meeting to order.
Yes, sir.
All cool, please.
Sure. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Harvickins?
Here.
Mr. Ames?
I'm not sure if I got called, but here. I heard Ames, then I'm usually after that, and there was silence.
Mr. Lennox?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
Here.
Mayor McCann, all our presidents.
Christiane, will you comply with the Freedom of Information Act?
Yes, sir, we are.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Reverend Denise, would you please lead us to the location? You're on mute, Reverend.
Let us pray. Holy and gracious Lord, source of all wisdom, we ask your blessing upon this council gathered that they may be united in common purpose and led with compassion, courage, and higher vision. We beseech you so to guide and inspire all who have been entrusted to care for this community, that they may provide leadership that will seek the greater good and peace for all people. Grant that we may never forget that our common life depends upon each other's toil. Be present, O Lord, with these leaders in times of decision. Place wise counselors in their midst and give them perseverance to fulfill their calling to serve. Open their eyes to the things that divide and guard their hearts against discord, arrogance, and pride. In times of prosperity, fill us with thankfulness, and in these days of trouble, may our trust in you never fail. In these difficult times, we ask for protection on our nation and peace to prevail. Set our course, O God of eternity, and let your light shine upon our way. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Reverend, your outdoor session to be well received on Saturday.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise their right hand. The approval of the minutes now for the special meeting on December 28th, December 30th, and January 5th.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, I have a correction to suggest for the December 30th I think we have a scribe error on December 30th for item number five. I'm suggesting we delete the word "but." And on item six, under a German, I'm suggesting we delete "Town Council returned from executive session without taking action," when in fact, the next sentence indicates that we did take action.
Okay. Kind of a motion on that with the changes?
Well, I'm moving that we change, as I just articulated.
Do you second? Tammy, okay. Any questions on that? All in favor, just please raise their right hand, make it easier. Okay, report to the town manager.
We still have to approve all of the minutes.
We did, I read them all, Bill. You approved the amendment.
Yeah.
Now we'll do a motion as amended. Okay, now I'm going to do a motion as amended, Bill.
Right, so I move that we approve all of the minutes, including the one on December 30th as amended.
Okay, second? Second, Tammy, okay. All in favor of the approval of the amendment, raise your right hand. Okay, Christiane?
Yes.
Okay, report to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Jane Kelly, the Assistant State Epidemiologist for the Department of Health and Environmental Control, to provide an update to us on the vaccine rollout and the current status of the pandemic. Dr. Kelly, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me. I would like to share some slides, if I may.
Yes.
Yes, you should be able to do that if you click on Share Screen.
Great, I know it's in here somewhere.
It is the little computer-looking icon.
No, I have that, it's just, oh, I'm not sure, can you see my slides at this point?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you again for inviting me, I think this is a very important subject. I'm going to focus on just a few pieces and then make sure we've left adequate time for questions. I do want to point out the statistics that we have, this is a particular graph that's showing the seven-day moving average of COVID-19 county cases, excuse me, by different regions of the state, and the light blue line is the low country, lower than other portions of the state, but nevertheless, on the increase. And that downward dip, remember, there's always a reporting delay as we enter numbers into our system, so I think that dip is not real, I think that we are continuing to increase. Similarly, these are COVID-19 deaths in South Carolina, this is as of today, but again, that lower bar for January 16th, remember that there are reporting delays, and also remember that a rise in deaths is delayed two or more weeks after a rise in cases. So we are very concerned that we're going to see an increasing surge in cases and an increasing surge in deaths, and that's important, not only for the obvious reason about mortality, but also the concern that as people are hospitalized for severe disease, that our hospitals in South Carolina will become overwhelmed with trying to provide medical care. This is the age distribution for deaths among COVID-19 persons in South Carolina. As you can see, 69% of deaths are in those aged 71 and older. That is part of why South Carolina moved to vaccinating those who are aged 70 and older in this phase right now. There is increased risk for those 60 and older, and as you can see, we do have deaths, even in younger age groups, as young as 21 years of age, but the risk really increases with age. I want to speak a little bit about the new variants. Here are some of the things that we know about new variants. RNA viruses, which SARS-CoV-2 is an RNA virus, they frequently mutate. Not all mutations are significant, but some of them don't mean anything at all biologically, they're just changing out a single amino acid and it has no importance. The British variant, which you may have seen in the news, it's also known as B.1.1.7, has been shown to spread more easily, it is more contagious, and it has been identified in the United States. The good news is, there's no evidence of increased severity, hospitalizations, or death associated with this variant, but remember, it is new, so we don't have as much information about it as we would like. There are also new variants, new mutations circulating in South Africa and in Brazil, they are also more transmissible, but so far, we are not aware of them being here in the United States. Both the British and the South African variants are associated with a higher number of virus particles, that's sometimes called the viral load, in the upper respiratory tract, so it makes sense that they would spread more easily, if you're carrying more virus in your nose, you're going to be more contagious. This is a map from today about where we've identified the British variant. We have not identified it in South Carolina yet, but I think that that's only a matter of time. Our public health laboratory does do genomic testing on a random sample of viruses, looking not only for this variant, but for others as well. We haven't seen it yet, but I think considering, you know, it went from six states to 11 states in a matter of a week, I think it's just a matter of time. Now, what is it we don't know about these new variants, and this is pertinent to this meeting? What we don't know is whether these new variants will respond the same way to medications like remdesivir or to the monoclonal antibodies. They might not, they might not respond the same way to those effective medications. It is possible that some of the tests, especially the rapid tests, might not pick up on, might not detect these new variants. Now, most of the PCR tests, those are the nasal swab, or the oral swab, or the saliva tests, they look at multiple different targets to try and find the virus, so we don't think that they will not be able to pick up the new variant, but we are concerned that the rapid tests, and people are relying more and more on those rapid tests, might not detect it. There is no evidence that the current vaccines would not protect against the British variant, the one from the United Kingdom. We don't know about South Africa, it has, that variant has more mutations to the spike protein, so it does raise some concerns. Pfizer and University of Oxford, which is working with the AstraZeneca vaccine that is not approved yet, but is coming, those scientists are testing those vaccines against the new variants, though it doesn't say so on my slide, I know the Moderna company is doing so as well, and I included a link if you wanted to read more about these new variants. Here's what's critical, these new variants spread more quickly, so it is reasonable for us to expect that this is going to lead to a rapid rise in COVID-19 cases. Now, I did just finish saying that there's no evidence that it's more lethal, however, new cases can still be pretty sick, even if they don't die, they may need hospitalization for oxygen or for other medications. So the concern is, we already have new cases that are the highest ever, not just in the country, but specifically in South Carolina. Many of our healthcare systems are at or near capacity, especially when it comes to terms of intensive care unit hospitalization, or even the availability of oxygen. So this evidence that these new variants spread more easily is very worrisome. What can we do about it? Well, you guys have this mantra by heart, right? Wear a mask, stay six feet apart, avoid crowds, get vaccinated when you're able, but I know that you are voting on whether to maintain your mask mandate, and I just want to give you another piece of information around masks. You've heard me present before, the scientific evidence and evidence from CDC supporting the concept that masks work. I want to point out which kinds of masks work best. What works best is a well-fitting, meaning that it's snug against your cheek, against your nose, it has one of those metal nose pieces that you can pinch down, make sure it fits over your nose, and that has two or more layers, two or more layers of cloth is very important. And this illustration, I hope, helps to communicate why. You can see on the left-hand side where it says aerosol, that's where we have droplets that may be infectious, or aerosolized viral particles, they are mechanically stopped by that first layer. Are they 100% stopped? No, but then when they hit the second layer, there's not only mechanical filtration, if you have a mask that has two different types of cloth, that would be ideal, because it sets up what's called an electrostatic charge. You know, I may have talked with you about this before, the idea that when you walk quickly, for example, in the winter, across a rug, and then you touch a metal doorknob or something metal, that you may get a little electric shock, that's what I mean by electrostatic charge. If you've got a mask with two different types of material, it sets up a small electrostatic charge, but that makes a difference in terms of the virus, because virus particles, even if they are so small that they could pass through the cloth, they will stick if there is an electrostatic charge. Nothing in life is 100%, that's true for masks as well, that's why we've got those other recommendations about avoiding indoor crowds and keeping your distance, but there's more and more evidence that masks work. We are entering the most difficult time of this pandemic. You think the past nine months have been difficult, the surge that we are experiencing now, and the concern about what these new variants mean, indicates to me that this is the most important time of this pandemic for wearing a mask. I'd be happy to take some questions.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Is there any questions for Dr. Kelly about the status of the pandemic?
Yeah, I have, I have one, if I may. Dr. Kelly, we have a large tourist population on the island, it's my understanding that we do not receive, we in this, in South Carolina, receive the statistics of positive tests by guests, is that correct?
Quite. It depends, it depends upon how the information is transferred. So for example, if a resident in South Carolina gets diagnosed in Chicago, we have it set up so that that state will communicate to us, so that we're sure where that person is and what their status is. Similarly, if we know, if a case was diagnosed and this person is actively infected and against advice from the health department in another state, it has told the health department that they are moving to South Carolina, they will communicate that information to us, including contact information, so that we can contact that person and follow up. But of course, that's a lot of caveats, that depends upon the person who's been tested in another state, telling that health department that they're leaving to come to South Carolina, telling them, you know, what their contact information is, so that they can share it with us. Remember that most people who are infected, they're, it's recommended they isolate for 10 days, or if you were exposed, it's recommended that you quarantine for 14 days, but after that period of time, they're not infectious.
But I'm wondering if a tourist guest comes down here for a week, and in the middle of that week has a test that's positive, do we, at the local level or even state level, know that that's happened, because that person is from out of state?
We do know, if they had the test done in South Carolina, then all labs are required by law to report to us. So if they got tested in South Carolina, we will have that information. If they got tested elsewhere, it depends upon their communicating their travel information.
Thank you.
And similarly, sorry, just to finish, we would also notify the others, the home state, that we have somebody living here temporarily in South Carolina who is infected, so that they're, they're aware of that, so that they have that for their statistics as well.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly.
I see a pen raised.
Yeah, Dr. Kelly, first, thank you very much for, for coming into our session today. My, my comments are from anecdotal information, and it, I think it deals with logistics, but what I'm hearing from a number of people is that they, they had a scheduled appointment here for a vaccine, it's been canceled, and many of those people now are contacting MUSC and are getting quite rapid treatment in terms of appointments. Is something different about MUSC in Charleston versus the Hilton Head area? Is our supply per person less than in Charleston? Do we, do we have a shortage of people that are being allowed to administer the vaccine as opposed to the medical center?
Sure.
Yeah.
Thank you for that question. So the, right now, we have an acute shortage of vaccine, and I think if medical university is able to administer vaccine, part of that may be because there, they have had more vaccine than they were able to administer to their healthcare providers because of vaccine hesitancy. Let me explain the process. We receive weekly a certain number of doses from Pfizer vaccine, and that's the one that goes to healthcare providers in this first phase, and to those aged 70 and above, and a certain number of doses of the Moderna vaccine, which currently in South Carolina goes to long-term care facilities. As soon as we have residents and staff vaccinated with Moderna in long-term care facilities, it will become available to, to others as well. In the, we started receiving Pfizer vaccine December 14th, we asked, there are over 1,000, over, over 1,000 vaccine administration points in South Carolina, but not all of them have been activated yet, because we had limited number of doses. So that first week, December 14th, we specifically asked a number of larger hospital settings about how much vaccine they wanted, and we put a limit, we put a top limit on it. The bottom limit for Pfizer, sorry to be giving you so much detail, but I think it's helpful for you to understand, a facility has to be able to handle at least 975 doses of the Pfizer vaccine, because it's got the strange, super cold requirements. So a facility in order to receive vaccine in the beginning had to order either 975 or up to 4,975, I think it is, doses of vaccine. MUSC wanted more than that, but we told them, no, you can only order the maximum. That was true for Prisma Health as well. So all other hospital facilities around the state who got vaccine that first week got the amount that they ordered, and they ordered on the basis of how fast they could use, thought they could use it. Now remember, that's before age 70 was specified, so they were thinking solely of vaccinating their workers in healthcare settings. Each week, we receive a certain amount of vaccine. This past week, there was a, I'm not certain where the problem with production lay, but all of the states received less vaccine than the usual allocation. Our usual allocation in South Carolina is 30,000, about 30,000 doses of each of those two vaccines. We received 20,000 of each of those vaccines. So, you know, facilities received less than they requested, because we received less than we requested. So I'm sorry, I'm giving you this long-winded story, but, but yes, facilities in the Beaufort area get a lower dose because they requested a lower dose, now that they're requesting more, however, we don't have it to give, but MUSC still had some doses from their early request. I don't know why they have not been able to roll it out as quickly, it may be because some of their medical providers declined, saying, mm, I'm not certain about vaccine, I'll just wait. So they had more vaccine available to give to the general public.
And one last question, are you still comfortable with the hierarchy in terms of vaccinations, people that are in healthcare that are working with a COVID patient first, then people that are in critical positions next, and then 70 and over next? That, that type of order of battles, that still makes sense to you?
Let's take them one at a time, because I think that's a critical question, and I do want to point out that, you know, these decisions are, are subject to change, they are subject to change depending upon vaccine availability, you know, it's supply, demand, but also as we get more information around risk. So when I say supply, we've been talking about, we've had an acutely, acute decrease in supply. However, Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is on the horizon, and when they, if they get, as we anticipate, authorized in February, then we'll have a great number more of those doses of vaccine, and that will help. The Phase 1A, we thought, you know, the goal here is, goal always is reduce mortality. So the highest mortality by far in this state has been among people living in long-term care facilities, so let's vaccinate them first. What about workers in healthcare settings? Well, if we don't vaccinate them, and they, even if they don't become deathly ill, they just isolate, they're out of the healthcare system, so people are going, you know, hospitals will become overwhelmed. Age 70 and above, again, was a decision of where do we have the highest deaths, I mean, 69% of the deaths in South Carolina have been among those 71 and above. Phase 1B and 1C, I think, are far more challenging to think about. Phase 1B is workers in healthcare settings who have not yet been vaccinated, for whatever reason, they put it off, they didn't want to get vaccinated first in line in Phase 1A, but they still need to be vaccinated. People who live in congregate settings, for example, people who live in group homes, which are not quite the same as nursing homes, but nevertheless, you know, we're seeing outbreaks in those settings. But also frontline workers in essential services, but I want to point out a caveat about that, that is not everybody who works in essential services. What we mean by frontline are the people who by their occupation have an unavoidable, substantially increased risk of exposure. So it is not everybody who's an essential worker, and we're thinking about ways that we can qualify that a little bit more, because we want to maintain our essential services, however, that's, if we vaccinated everybody who worked in essential services, it would take a long time before we got to the people who are vulnerable because of medical conditions, and we want to make sure we get to them as quickly as possible. So in answer to your question, it is still, there is still discussion at DEHAC about the best way to do this, because we don't want to be blocking chronic, people with chronic condition, we don't want to delay getting vaccine to them.
Thank you, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Lennox?
Dr. Kelly, thank you for being here, I can, I can appreciate the demands on your time over the past 10 or 12 months. My question is pertaining to the vaccine protocol and residency. As you may know, we've got a large population of second homeowner, vacation homeowners. Many of them are either resident already or are coming down to their second home. If they're from Ohio or someplace out of South Carolina, are they available to access the vaccine here?
Yes, they are, so there are, South Carolina is not asking for any documentation of permanent residency, and we prefer people get both doses of vaccine in one state, because you can imagine the confusion if you get your dose in Ohio and then come to South Carolina, you want to make sure you get, you know, did you get the Moderna or the Pfizer? You want to make sure you get the right one, you don't want to mix and match, but there is no permanent residency requirement.
Thank you.
Now, go. Now, go.
I'm comfortable with the report that we've received, and I too am grateful, Dr. Kelly, for sharing this information. We need to stay up to date, because we get all kinds of misinformation of the public, so it's good to have scientific information. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Keller, for your, your presentation. I was going to wait until general comments to just mention a few things, but I think it's appropriate now, after hearing some of the discussion from other council persons, you know, as Dr. Kelly has described, the statistics are on the rise in terms of the cases, and of course, the deaths could, could follow, and Hilton Head being in the peculiar situation that's in, number one, we have a higher age demographic, and also, we have an increase in our population due to our visitors, and then you combine that with the fact that there's, in, I guess, layman words, a state of confusion when it comes to the vaccination, and not to anybody's fault, it's just what it is at the moment, right? And a shortage of supply, you know, that, that recipe is not necessarily adding up to, to success, right? So, you know, we should be gravely concerned about this, we should be taking it as a very serious manner, not suggesting that no one is. I'll just take a moment to, to mention that, you know, Senator Tom Davis has been working very hard on communicating with, with leaders, they actually have a call scheduled today with members of DEHAC, the governor's office, just trying to get, you know, heads wrapped around the situation, and to put our medical providers, you know, Beaufort Memorial, Hilton Head Hospital, Coastal Carolina, in a better position when it comes to not only receiving the vaccinations, but of course, getting them into, into folks' arms. There seems to be a lot of, I guess, stop points in the process, okay, that need to be ironed out, so, you know, folks are working very hard on that process. You know, at some point, I would hope that we have plans here locally to where we could stand up mass events when the supply is available. I think that's critical, particularly right here on Hilton Head, is very critical, and I'm more than certain that there's somebody from town staff that is involved in that, that session that's, that's happening with Senator Davis right now. So I think Josh also, for So I think Josh also for your, your update that came out today from the town manager's position, had a lot of useful information in there, a lot of useful links that folks can, can go to and, and receive more information. But at the end of the day, again, with our population being older, with us having the tourists coming in, and a lot of interaction with our, our service workers, you know, we need to ensure as much confidence and make the accessibility to the vaccine as comfortable as possible. And I know that that's a challenge, a challenge at the federal level, a challenge at the state level, and no different being a challenge here at our local level. So wrapping our arms around it, I think, should be definitely a priority for us at the town. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Amy?
Well, first, I wanted to say thank you. Your report and the information that you provided is very useful in helping all of us to better understand the big picture, and I appreciate all of the questions that have come before mine, and you pretty much have answered all that was in my mind. And so I will thank you again, and thank staff for putting all this together and turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Kelly, thank you very, very much, and be safe out there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And just, just if I may make a comment to Mr. Brown's comments in turn, we are working, we don't have enough vaccine to be doing mass vaccination really, but that is definitely part of the plan. Mobile vans are part of the plan. I'm glancing at my notes because we just had a task force meeting today, and I mentioned that there are location sites around the state. We've got 1,289 location sites around the state that are approved vaccine clinics. Only 287 of them are quote "activated," meaning that they, they're receiving vaccine right now because there just isn't that much vaccine to go around. But each week, we expect to receive about 60,000 doses of vaccine, hopefully, if nothing changes, and that will be distributed throughout the state in, in, in a manner so that we hope that we will have a footprint coverage throughout the state. But, you know, thank you, everyone. And I'd be glad to come back and talk to you anytime, just let me know.
Thank you.
You can count on that, Dr. Kelly. Thank you very much.
Mr. Grober?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Michael Gentman, Chair of the Town's Design Review Board, to give an update on the board and its actions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a hard, hard act to follow there. Our, our report is, actually, the outlook is good on our end for the DRB. The pandemic has had actually no visible effect on the number of projects in 2020 versus 2019. So the industry is still busy and the board is, is still busy. So that's, that's good news, so that means things are still moving. Statistically, we had 71 major DRB reviews in 2020, and we had 70 in 2019, so it's a difference of, of one on the plus side. And upcoming for us, this, myself and the other six members on the board, we are going to draft a letter to town council and the planning commission on a couple of items that we've been discussing over the last year or so regarding allowable building heights and, and interior buffers within a site. And since it has not formally gone to our board yet, I, I can only kind of give you that bare bones of those two subjects, but it is something that will be coming up in our February agenda. If anyone like to have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer. Mr. Gettman, I do, and I appreciate the work that the DRB puts in. And I understand from observation the sometimes awkward position that the DRB finds itself when it is somewhat discouraged by a proposed building and, in fact, find out that it is permitted by code. Though I encourage what you're looking at and look forward to hearing how that works through the process. I, I think that there is a clear disconnect between the aesthetic sensitivity of the DRB and, in some cases, the products that are being produced on the island. So again, thank you for your time, your professional leadership, and also thank the DRB for the time that they put into oftentimes difficult situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Glenn?
Thank you. I have observed a number of the DRB meetings over the term of my service, and I am always impressed at how protective the DRB is about the image and appearance of our island. You are doing a wonderful job in preserving the image that we are trying to project, the image that we're trying to live under, so I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanford. Mr. Becken?
I just want to echo Glenn's comments. They were very on point. I sit in and listen and watch many of your meetings, and I'm extremely pleased and impressed by what a great job you guys do and how much concern and love for the island is absolutely demonstrated at each meeting. So thank you, and, and thank the rest of the board for what they do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Becken. Any other questions for Michael? Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Gettman, thank you for the, the update, and I appreciate you, you know, taking the initiative to, to memo council on some of your, your ongoing concerns. And I may be jumping ahead just a little bit here, but the, the town of Hilton Head commissioned Gullah Gitchi Task Force almost four years ago, and in turn, there was a consultant hired with a list of recommendations. One of those speaks to the design and review process and the board's activities within the Gullah communities. Just curious to know, are you familiar with that at all?
It hasn't come up during my tenure. I've been on the board for, oh, I guess, five years, and chairman this year. We have had a couple of projects that have, that have come through, but I don't remember specifically there being any, any special addition or, or side notes to those that would have been different than a regular review, but I would, I would, I would love to be more familiar with that, and I don't, if, if you can point me in the right direction.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that you just maybe have a session with the Historic Neighborhood Preservation Administrator, who has the body of work and also the responsibility for implementation. We're not there yet as far as the designer review being one of the items before council, but I think it's important that you are aware of the direction, okay? That, that report really spells out the need for us to do business somewhat differently within the historic neighborhood, so I think it's important that, that you and your team at least know that that's on the horizon at some point.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to read it if, if you'd like to send that to me. I'd be happy to read it and share it, and we can make it a, a point of, an agenda item at a, at a near, near meeting.
Josh, if you don't mind, can you link Mr. Gettman and, and Dr. DeBois up?
Certainly, we'll be happy to do that, Mr. Brown. I would also make sure that folks are aware that the highest priority coming out of the task force recommendations was the creation and implementation of an overlay district. That is a project that staff is still working on actively with town council. And so we are aware that there are many other recommendations within that report, but we are working on it on a priority basis, but it's a public record, and we'll be happy to share with Mr. Gentman.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And, and before I leave, I would like to plug town staff. They make our job a lot easier, you know, Chris Dornell in particular. We always get a thoroughly vetted report when it comes to us, and it makes our job much easier and helps, really helps with the consistency because the board members do change every two or three years. You know, there'd be a new person coming in, so the town staff does a, does a really great job of, of keeping us heading in the right direction.
Thank you very much. Points of interest? Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple items of interest to report on this evening. First, I would like to thank our fire rescue personnel. They continue to support the efforts of the Hilton Head Hospital and other local health agencies with regards to the drive-up testing that is available Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. This last month, they worked a total of 88 hours during that timeframe to support that testing effort, and we want to thank them. We also want to let folks know that within that 1A classification that was discussed previously with Dr. Kelly is our frontline fire rescue personnel. They have begun receiving the vaccine. So far, we have 55 line personnel and nine uniformed officers who have received both doses of the vaccine, and we've began administering it to our 911 dispatchers as well, and they are in the process of receiving both of those doses. Want to let folks know that next week, on Thursday and Friday, January 28th and 29th, the town's going to be conducting its annual strategic workshop. We want to let folks know that because of space limitations and concerns with regards to spacing of participants, that the meeting is going to be limited to council members and staff only. However, we will be able to broadcast the meeting on various mediums so that people can go to our website, they can go to our Facebook page, or they can go to the county channel, both online and through their cable providers, to access a live broadcast of both Thursday and Friday's sessions. Again, those will be from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Thursday, the 28th, and Friday, the 29th. And lastly, I want to give a shout out to Carolyn Grant. For those of you that have an opportunity to read the annual, or the monthly newsletter that's published by the Municipal Association, there was a piece on public information officers and communication directors within that most recent monthly article, and there was some expose on Carolyn and some of the great work that she does helping to get our message out to the community. So I wanted to say thank you for representing the town well in that publication. Mr. Mayor, those are all the items of interest that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Grober. Before, what's from the council? General reports. First of all, I told everybody today that I would have for you an outline today, if not the agenda for the retreat, okay? I do not have it. I won't have it until, Josh, we won't have it until Wednesday or Thursday. And the reason being is that when we switched the date from November, from December to January, it ran into a busy season, so she's a little behind. But we will get it this week, Wednesday or Thursday. If we get it Wednesday, you'll have it Thursday, if we get it Thursday, you'll have it Friday. Okay? Other, other general reports? Okay. Reports from public, public services?
No report at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Reports from the Public Planning Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. The Public Planning, Public Planning Committee met on January 12th to discuss the proposed bonus density housing amendment and approved it as submitted. The amendment is before council today for its first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Administration Committee? Tom?
Mr. Lennox, I'm muted.
Thank you, John. The FNA Committee met, met today with two agenda items. The first was a report of the conclusion of the second quarter in the fiscal year. John Troyer reported on revenue expenses compared to last year and compared to budget. The trend continues to be encouraging. The second agenda item was a proposed Broad Creek PSD ASR facility on the town's Greenwood Track. The committee voted unanimously to refer to council with recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox. There are no presentations in appearance by citizens?
Yes, sir. For appearance by citizens, we have two citizens signed up. The first is Amy Ali. Ms. Ali, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Good afternoon. Amala Ali. I didn't hear this.
Your address, please, ma'am.
Yes, 7 Sam Frazier Retreat, Hilton Head Island, 29926.
Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
Thank you for having us and having this opportunity. We are the indigenous people. You have us landlocked, joblocked, and legacylocked. You took in our beaches, built million-dollar homes so close together they may have COVID. You gave us pennies and made billions, put us in pockets, and we still can't do anything with the land our ancestors left us. Where is our piece of the pie? Is this genocide? My people are in every plantation, and not one is named after them. You've hired outside people to take our jobs. Where is our piece of the pie? We have no businesses left. You won't even let us put teepees on our land, but you guys are making billions. Is this genocide? As Charles Frazier told us all, "We all shall eat, we all shall prosper." And a quote from the great Williams, "A system cannot fail those it was not designed to protect." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ali. Sir, the next person we have signed up is Mr. Hoagland, Skip Hoagland. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Skip Hoagland, Whimel Harbor. You have no master land plan. You are not in FOIA compliance, and the town audit was a fraud. Your secret COVID corruption continues. Now this council chooses another corrupt local, Mark Orlando, to run Hilton Head versus an honest outsider that could clean up this Hilton Head corruption. Orlando, like Steve Riley and Josh Gruber, all buddies illegally use tax funds and violates FOIA laws. This crook Orlando sold memberships for Bill Miles and the Hilton Head Chamber, trying to put his own honest greater Bluffton Chamber out of business. This was illegal and against South Carolina laws, and there will be lawsuits. Now we discover crooks and frauds McCann, Harkins, and Lennox, who lied when they said they saw the chamber accounting at the chamber offices, now help fraud David Ames, scheme with crook town lawyer Curtis Coltrane and highly crooked Bluffton lawyer Terry Finger, with Bill Miles and his crooked lawyers David Tigges and Walter Nestor, to draft a multimillion-dollar ATAX DMO contract designed to allow Bill Miles to keep secretly stealing and laundering millions of tax funds, our tax funds, as his secret sauce. I keep repeating, where's the FBI? The Attorney General? SLED? South Carolina DOR? South Carolina Treasury? Turk? Beaufort County Hilton Head Bluffton has been seized and hijacked by the most corrupted, dishonest, and incompetent hired and elected officials I have ever witnessed. You must, we must demand forensic audits, full transparency, accountability, and proven returns of every penny of the millions of our tax money issued and illegally used by, by all of you as elected and hired shysters. This town now attempts to not only, now attempts to not, to, to not allow local residents to address council for three minutes will never succeed. You tried this in the past and even attempted to remove me and others speaking by police. Sheriff Tanner told all of you to never involve his police in removing citizens by force who are abiding by the law or the First Amendment. Do you really think you can deny me or anybody, including out-of-town lawyers, developers, business owners, from addressing council? You all cannot be this stupid. Lennox, yes, he is that stupid. I can tell you, you people have got to clean up your act. You've got to start being honest, you've got to start being more transparent, and this corruption has got to end. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland. That concludes appearance by citizens, sir.
Okay, there is unfinished business, but a new business, 12A, consideration of proposed emergency ordinance 2020-02. This is the face covering mandate.
consideration of proposed emergency ordinance 2020-02. This is the face covering mandate.
I, I move for continuation of the mandate, and I would also, uh, suggest that, uh, doctor, the doctor, uh, a message in her slides be posted on our website.
I'll second that motion.
Good. Okay. Discussion by anybody? Okay, cool, though.
Uh, Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Approve.
Mrs. Becker? Mrs. Becker? Yeah. Uh, Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
Yes.
Mayor McCann?
Yes. And Ms. Becker gave a thumbs up.
She gave a thumbs up. 7-0, sir.
Thank you. First reading proposal in this 20-2036 workforce housing LMO amendment. Would you?
Motion.
I move to, uh, for the first reading.
And David second to, would you like to make a few comments, David?
Actually, if, if staff, staff has done a yeoman's job on this, and if staff would like to just briefly summarize the difference between this proposal and what was brought before council in November.
Ms. Lopko?
Thank you, Jamie.
Yes, sir. Good, good afternoon, council. Um, the original bonus density that was brought forward to council was for a larger portion of the island. We had identified three priority areas that had, um, I think it was 1,800 acres of, of property that could have been eligible. And now we took a second look at that. This council was concerned about, um, the, the scope of the area and also the amount of workforce housing that we would get, um, with that program. So we went back and looked at it and started with our RM4 district, which is one of the lower-density districts, um, and pared that down to, um, larger parcels of three acres or more that would, um, have the adequate space to have, um, buffers and setbacks and infrastructure to, um, facilitate the workforce housing. And so then we looked at protecting the environment and not having marked front properties. And also, when we prioritized, um, we looked at proximity to transportation and employment centers. So we wanted them to be close to a minor arterial, but then also wanted them to be, um, away from the airport. So there was some location criteria we had looked at, and it narrowed it down to about 30 properties, about 160 acres that would be eligible to participate now in the program. So it's a smaller area. We also changed the amount of, uh, bonus density to a two-tier approach. Um, previously, um, you could get up to 100% bonus density, but only 50% of that bonus density, um, had to be workforce housing. So you were only essentially 25% of the development could potentially, uh, be required for workforce housing. Under this program, if you were to, uh, apply for 100% bonus density, um, you would have to give us 50% of the entire development as workforce housing. So essentially, all of the bonus units would be required to be workforce housing. The second tier of that is if you wanted to get a 50% bonus of your density, then 25% of the entire development would have to be workforce housing. So we're getting more workforce housing with this program versus the other, and we're starting with a smaller piece, um, to see if it would be successful. And they would still have to comply with all the provisions of the workforce housing program that have been adopted.
Thank you, Jamie.
The Planning Commission, uh, approved this unanimously and, um, described it as a good start. Um, I think it's a toe in the water. Uh, this will not answer our needs. It, it is going to require, um, additional funding. The creativity of the program, um, I think is, is a, is the right start for us on, on the island.
Glenn?
Yes, I have participated in this, uh, ongoing effort dealing with workforce housing. And like most members of council, I was very concerned about the extraordinary breadth of the first proposal. Uh, we sent that back to staff. They listened and have come back with a very reasonable program. It will have minimal effect on adjacent properties because of the size of it. And I think that it does get us started moving down this road to workforce housing. So I'm pleased to support this program. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you, John. Uh, we've talked for a long time about trying to determine what role the town plays, if any, in workforce development generally and specifically workforce housing. I've got to say, I've, I've sat, uh, from afar watching staff put this together in tandem with the, the David's Public Planning Committee, and I couldn't be more impressed with the way this came together and is before us now. Uh, it may be a toe in the water, but it certainly is a step in the right direction. And I'm more than excited, uh, to interact with property owners and potential property developers, uh, to try and find a way to make this work. Good job, staff, and real good job, Public Planning Committee, David.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, yes. Um, some of these comments, I'll be repeating myself from, um, what I mentioned during the Public Planning Committee. And, um, Councilman Ames, uh, I really appreciate your, your leadership in, in this, this topic. And, uh, it seems as if, uh, Ms. Lopko has been the staff person that's assigned to this very, very important topic. And I just encourage, uh, leadership to, to keep, uh, Jamie, um, in, in that, uh, capacity, uh, moving forward. I, I asked Jamie if, um, this was her baby, and her answer was yes. I asked Jamie if she would report back to Town Council on a very regular basis as to our success with the, uh, two toes in the water that we have so far, the conversion of the commercial spaces and also this amendment, uh, before us today. It is important that, uh, the council is, is well-informed on the progress of, of these amendments. Um, because as Councilman Ames has said, it, it's, it's just a baby step in that direction. Um, we know that we have a, a, a workforce and affordable housing crisis on Hilton Head, and we will have to do more, okay? We, we're going to have to accept the fact that we will have to do more. And doing more and legitimizing us doing more will come because we have solid metrics in place as to why we need to do more. Uh, so I just encourage, uh, encourage us to continue the conversation and, uh, encourage us to continue to think outside of the box as to how we can solve this issue, um, as efficiently as possible. Uh, so I will be in support of the, uh, the amendment today.
Ms. Ames?
Yeah, I, I wanted to confirm, Josh, perhaps you can confirm this. Um, the Public Planning Committee had an amendment to the proposed, uh, amendment, and that was to include in, um, uh, it within group living dormitories and then have group living excluded from this amendment, um, on RM4 parcels that are involved. It, is that a secondary amendment included in what we're voting on today?
Uh, Mr. Ames, I believe that was a formal part of the committee's recommendation when they gave approval, was it not?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want, I, I just wanted to make sure, uh, and confirm that.
Yes, we, we will confirm that before execution, but given the actions of the committee, that is what should be before council this evening.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Ames, or anybody else? Okay, with that, we'll take the vote. Mr.?
Uh, Mr. Brown?
Support.
Mr. Harkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ames?
Approve.
Mrs. Becker?
No.
Mr. Lennox?
Yes.
Mr. Stanford?
For the motion.
And Mayor McCann?
Yes.
6-1, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Grober, is there any need for executive session tonight? No, Mr. Mayor, there is not. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Second.
All in favor, please raise the right hand. Thank you very much. See you at the retreat. Thank you.